Okay, good evening everyone if you joined us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Why don't you shut my window?
Because there's too much background.
Well, welcome to the Town of Rutland Select Board Meeting for October 1st, 2019. Good to see all my fellow board members and department heads and those in the audience. Plenty to discuss tonight, so we're going to get right to it. Have all board members seen the orders minus Joey? Any discussion? Approval of Select Board Minutes of September 17th?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve, seconded by Sharon for discussion. Find anything, Mary?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
Motion passes with one abstention. Pass it to Sharon if you would. And then we'll look at the special minutes of September 23rd. Um, any, is there a motion to approve those?
Still moved.
Motion by Sharon.
Second.
Seconded by John Paul. Discussion purposes?
I think it was both contract negotiations and, um, potential litigation.
I agree. All those in favor with the one addition?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with one abstention. Sharon sign that one for us, Joe?
I think these are done.
Are there any questions from the floor? Public comment? Anyone who's not on the agenda who wishes to speak at this time? Seeing none, I would ask this board to, uh, entertain us, uh, recessing out of the Board of Select Board, uh, meeting and entering into a Board of Public Health Commissioners meeting at this time.
So moved.
Motion by Mary, seconded by Sharon for discussion. All those in favor? Any opposed?
I abstain.
Okay.
So, aye, 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 right?
I heard him in my own head, so. Aye, 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 alright. We are, I'm declaring us in at 6:03 into the Town of Rutland Board of, um, Health Commissioners. Um, there's, and, uh, we'll, we'll have plenty to discuss tonight with fire and, uh, get, um, PD involved if necessary. Uh, but, uh, last night there was a, um, incident at the Holiday Inn. Um, the fire department was toned out around 9:40, um, to a smell of, of gas. Um, and it came in that, uh, a guest at the hotel was, uh, calling, uh, because there was, um, some question as to if the hotel staff and management would call, uh, 911. Um, and so the fire department responded and, "Chris, do you want to come up for this? You can fill us in, fill in the blanks here." I was able to join from about 11 to 1 last night and this morning to support the chief. Um, but, uh, myself and John Paul and, and Chief Clerk and, uh, Assistant Chief Carlson were there again today with the state. And, um, so the health officers drafted this letter before all of us to, uh, uh, decide whether or not to issue. Chris, can you give the board an update of what happened last night?
I can. We went down there, like you said, 9:40, first smell of propane. Uh, Captain Voighty got there first. He went around back. Engine one got there. Four guys tried to open the boiler room door with them. And as soon as they opened the door, the room exploded. Uh, heavy fire in the boiler room. There was a leak on the gas boiler. Uh, there was a sprinkler head in there tied to the domestic water line, which helped. It blew a hole through the wall into the adjacent room. It also blew the outside wall off. It was just kind of swinging in the breeze. Um, luckily, nobody got hurt. The building was occupied when we got there. No fire alarm. Um, we pulled the fire alarm, got everybody out. Had four other fire departments there with us. So, it could have been real, real bad, but.
So, uh, last night about 12:30, uh, you, myself, um, uh, and the state of Vermont huddled and the decision was made to close that, the south wing, about 50 rooms.
Yeah.
Uh, because of smoke and water damage. And, um, the Red Cross was called in and they put some cots in the banquet room or conference room for those residents. Very limited amount of hotel rooms available in the Rutland area last night. This week actually due to foliage season, so that complicated things. And ultimately, the decision was made to, uh, because there was no, at that time determined there was no fire risk, um, that, uh, the two other wings could stay occupied last night because of the timing of this incident. Um, and upon our meeting again today, we walked the building with the state. Um, and John Paul was, uh, an integral part. And, um, many violations were pointed out. Many serious concerns were discussed. Uh, certainly, in my opinion, the ownership doesn't fully understand the magnitude of their lack of care for the property and life safety. That was very evident last night and today. And it was very disappointing, quite frankly. Um, and so upon this, um, our health officer has drafted this letter for this board to, um, uh, review. So, John, would you take it from there?
So, I, uh, did a limited investigation and, uh, learned that the Holiday Inn had a complaint from at least two of their tenants that there was a smell of gas. And rather than immediately vacating and notifying the fire department, they sent their maintenance man to try and fix the problem. He shut off a single service LP gas appliance which, uh, and still didn't call the fire department. In the interim, one of the guests called the 911 to report the smell of gas. Our fire department responded. They weren't on scene more than, what, 10 minutes before that explosion occurred. Um, today, we met and we're working in conjunction with Patrick Banks, who's Assistant State Fire Marshal, and, uh, G. Argaro, who's the, um, Division of Fire Safety guy. We're working in conjunction with them, but I issued an order, an emergency health order, that they may not lease any more rooms because they don't have any hot water. The gas company shut the gas off at the source and reported to us, there were several leaks along the line of the gas service. It comes in on the west of the building and travels with the building to the east. They don't know when they're going to be able to get that up and running. The gas system is their source of hot water, so they don't have any hot water. Under the state law, you can't rent a room without hot water. So, um, but there, the building is occupied by the people that were there on the wing that wasn't vacated. I think Red Cross set up some cots in their area because all the rooms, the motel rooms in the area are filled with people looking at the leaves, so, um, and they, and they're booked solid till December, so I don't know. But what's confronting this board now is, I've allowed the people that are there to stay there tonight. I, I, uh, required that the management inform everybody, there is no hot water. But rather than have people be out on the street tonight, I don't, I don't want to hurt the people that were renting the rooms as little as possible, but I do feel we have to comply with state law. Um, so they're there tonight, but I told them that that may not be the case tomorrow, that we may have to issue an order that the place be shut down until there's hot water. And I don't know how we get, I don't know how a board gets around that because it's right in the statute that you can't rent the room without, I know the mission's had issue, you know, any public building, you can't rent a room without hot water.
They had to shut down for that purpose.
It becomes, really becomes a sanitary and health issue, which is why they're so strict about it. So it's anticipated the repair time could be upwards of a week to two weeks. That's the best information.
I don't see where you have a choice, John, but to shut them down till they, until they comply.
You know, I didn't, uh, before I notified them that their current guests could stay this evening, I did consult with both of these fellows from the state and our own department. Everybody was kind of in agreement, we should try and minimize the trauma to the people that are there and give them some time to find a different place to go, that kind of thing, uh, before we shut it down. But I, I don't really have a choice but to recommend we shut it down tomorrow until they can satisfy the state inspectors that it's safe to, for people to rent rooms there again.
You have to?
Yeah, I make a motion that you shut it down.
Motion by Sharon, seconded by Joe DiNardo. Mary, did you have a question?
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm wondering why the state isn't doing this and why the town is. I mean, I understand your authority, but why isn't the state? This is a, state public building should have been inspected by the state certified.
So I have, uh, I asked for the last two years of, uh, inspection history. I have, uh, 17 violations, none of which seem to have been addressed over the last two years by this organization.
Does the state share that information with the town?
They just gave it to us. They're the ones that gave us a printout.
Do they share it with the fire department?
We will. I mean, we just got it.
No, I know, but if it's been ongoing for, I don't know how long.
Well, I asked for 17 and eight, or 18 and 19, so the 17 complaints I have are, I mean, the 17 violations I have start back in...
And Chief Clerk, you, you, the department was aware of several of these violations because you guys have been...
We were. We've been down there with, uh, we've been down there a couple times with the state. The problem is...
It's primary authority on this.
For, right now, I am the state, but, uh, the, I'm a state employee as a health officer, so I am the state down there.
Right.
And, um, but I don't have the expertise to determine this, which is why I'm relying on the guys in these two departments.
I guess I'm just kind of surprised that they're not. And it's left to the, to the town to do, but they, in the same time...
Because I don't think it was left to the town.
Okay.
I, I just don't know that they anticipated running into what they were going to run into. Josh alerted me, and so it made sense that I'd be there during this inspection.
Yeah, no, I don't have any qualms with anything the town has done. I just think there's a lot of information that wasn't conveyed to us from the state. I mean, if this, what else is going on in town that the state knows about that they haven't been sharing?
Yeah, I mean, it's a little bit broader than...
Because we don't, um, do our building inspections. The city does, I believe the city does their own, but the town relies on the state, and I don't know, um, when I had Chris's job, there were, there were times when there were some really va, uh, flagrant violations that they would notify the fire department. But normally, they go in and, um, do their inspections of the bu, any rental unit, any building, they, the Department of Fire Safety has a, go in and they have to make sure everything is up to code. What bothers me with them is if there's that many violations, why they weren't more on top of getting the, you know, because the state could shut them down in a heartbeat if they don't meet, you know, life safety codes or whatever needs to be done. So they're a little behind the eight ball. They're a little lax there in doing their job, so.
The fire, fire inspector, Garrow, told us that, because I asked a question last night, you know, why, why aren't you guys finding the, the crap out of them, for a lack of better terms? And he said, "We do find them, and they happily write the check and send it off. Money is not a motivator for them to do what they need to do."
So maybe they need to be closed down, and maybe that'll motivate them to be safe. How many firemen were there that were going into that room when it blew?
Four.
Four. We could be sitting here tonight with four dead firemen.
Of course we could.
Were any hurt from last night?
I think it's our duty...
Because they had a door that...
To shut them down.
...openfully between them.
Uh, the other thing I'd ask this board, well, let's vote on the motion first. Is there any further discussion?
Um, just a question. It looks like JP and his authority as health officer is going to sign this. You're looking for the board to support this?
Ratify what I've done and then issue its own order to vacate.
On top of what you've done?
Correct.
Okay.
And Bill can type that.
Yeah. No, I can draft the order and stuff. I just need to, to, to have that ratified. I think I have the authority under the statute, but I don't want to, um, guess at it.
Does the Board of Health have it?
Pardon me?
Does the Board of Health have it?
Yeah, there's no doubt. The Board of Health has it.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I abstain.
Well, I'm sorry, four to nothing with one abstention. Uh, I would also ask that, um, we draft a letter, uh, and send it to Holiday Inn Corporate and inform them of what, uh, all of these violations at this franchise, uh, they, quite frankly, I, I can't believe that they would know what's going on in this building. Um, and if we send, uh, the corporate office a letter, uh, explaining our concerns and what has happened, I think we, we might, we might see something happen because Holiday Inn doesn't want a stained name out there.
Right, and the other thing is that I think someone, probably you, needs to call them tonight so that they can notify the people that are there, so they can start making arrangements.
I'm not opposed to it, but a phone call's not going to work, so it's...
Doing everything in writing. I, I will email them at the conclusion of this hearing what, uh, what the vote of the board was.
I also made the point with John Paul earlier, and I said, that they, they, it was very frustrating having these discussions today, uh, because I posed the question, so it's 1:30 in the afternoon, you don't have hot water, you have guests checking in tonight, what is the plan? And they didn't want, uh, it was all about the money, quite frankly. They did not want to have to call those guests and say, "We have a problem here." They were holding out that there was, this was going to be fixed. They didn't care that these guests would need to be displaced, rather than, you know, so it was really a, it was a disgusting performance, um, uh, that I witnessed today, and I think we all witnessed.
Well, they didn't even want to admit who had authority to be talking to me.
Right.
And I went up to one fellow that the state boys were talking to, and I said, "Who's in charge here?" He says, "Well, um, I'm not sure." I said, "Well, you seem to be in charge." "Well, well, sorta."
Yeah, sorta.
I said, "What do you mean, sorta? What does sorta mean?" I said, "Are you the manager?" "Yeah, I'm the manager."
Um, so I, I think that, uh, in regards to Josh's, um, mentioning of sending a letter to Holiday Inn Corporate, I think a copy of this action should go with it.
Correct.
So they know. And the other thing that sometimes gets their attention is, I don't know who the insurance carrier is for that building, but I think that if we have a way, they should be notified. If some, if there's some way, then your capacity as health officer or the town, they should be notified of what's going on because you know from your work, JP, the insurance company carries an awful lot of weight with, uh, building owner, like, you know.
That's a good idea.
It's a great idea.
That, that'll, that, that tends to really make them perk up and get attention there.
The bill, letter to corporate, letter to their insurance carrier. Uh, and then, wh- what statutes, um, do we have to find them for anything that happened last night? We find them recently for, was it the alarm?
Uh, nuisance calls.
Nuisance calls?
Yeah.
The roof leaked so bad.
Well, this would be, this would be, this could be, uh, considered a nuisance call that almost killed people.
Yeah, it wouldn't be. You're, you're clutching away. I don't know what you can do there, but, um, my hat off to the, these guys and the training, because that's what saves these guys' lives from going into that room, is what they've been taught and what they've learned and, you know. I, it's just, to me, that's...
Just you can't, you can't, um, emphasize the training enough.
Anything further to discuss on this?
Just a request.
Yes.
I mean, the first I heard of anything was about 10 minutes ago, when we started discussing this. And there are, you did ask us and we supported you on your request tonight. Would have been a little easier if we had a little more advance notice and a little more background. I understand you had to deal with the situation, and I respect that, but if you can keep us in the loop in the future, I'd be grateful.
Further discussion as the Board of Health?
Nothing else we have to sign or do, Josh? As a board?
Uh, not this time. Bill, you're going to draft some, okay. Um, someone make a motion to come out of the Board of Health?
I'll move. Second.
Motion by Sharon, seconded by Mary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We're out of the Board of Health meeting. Uh, we will resume the Board of Selectman meeting at 6:18. Um, Chief Clerk, did you have anything further to discuss with the board besides last night?
Uh, we are...
Okay, how's our new truck coming?
It's coming good. It's opening up real quick.
Okay.
We paid for it in our orders.
We did.
Yeah.
Another week or so, Chief?
What's that?
Another week or so?
Uh, next Friday at 12, I'm going to go get letters and, uh, I'm just going to go get the license plate on it, so, yeah, service company.
There was also, uh, there was also last night a, uh, section of five-inch hose that was run over by a guest at the, uh, Holiday Inn, and we did get the license plate, and we've, uh, given it to Deputy Chief Washburn, who's going to, um, investigate a little bit. That hose now has to be recertified, and, um, that comes with a $160 fine and two points if we're, if I'm not mistaken, correct? That's what Ted told us, so it's not a good idea to run over fire hose.
No.
So, um, but, great job last night, guys, and, uh, whatever you guys need, let us know. Alright, uh, Bill Sweet, 10 Ministry of Assistance to the Select Board, please. How are you tonight, Bill?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm great.
Uh, so, uh, that. Uh, number one, uh, again, is the updated, uh, committee agenda items. Um, added budget planning, uh, to each of them for, uh, the appropriate committees to discuss. And then, uh, we did send out, uh, the blank budget sheets to everybody to start working on, so that's in progress.
Those were emailed to us?
Yes. Uh, number two is on your desk, was not in the packet. That's the, uh, section of the energy plan for the hearing at scheduled for 7:00. Uh, number three, uh, JP, was your, your request to have included there was all of the properties in town covered under the stormwater ordinance? Yes. So that's, that's the detail list of that. Uh, every parcel on this list, uh, did get a letter. Um, and unlike the first couple of letters sent out, which did not get much reaction, uh, this one did.
This one got a ton.
Got, got.
Because I, I know that I got a number of calls, and it, it definitely, uh, in hindsight, was a little confusing to many people.
Uh, it, it's, it's unlikely it may have been, but everybody I've talked to under, kind of, has a better understanding now. Um, and it sounds like a lot of people are planning on attending the, um, the public meeting that the, um, Planning Commission, Stormwater Commissions, uh, got coming up for later on this month, so should, should help with a lot of that.
This is all the addresses we sent that thing to?
Yep.
Jeez.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot. There's all the parcels, all of the, uh, and it's, covers them all. I think you, you may, you may have gotten one, didn't you?
Three, Sharon.
I can't even find number one.
Is it still in your...
I'd look in there.
Probably a good idea, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, what do you got next for us?
Uh, number four, uh, is from your request, Joe.
Yep.
It's the fire hydrant ordinance, and then attached to that is a, uh, inspection form that was turned in at one point.
Um, did you make copies of this for Chris, so the department has them?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, and we just need to follow up on this and make sure that this stuff gets done in town, so that when the guys get there, they will open and they will work.
Uh, thank you. Yep, you're welcome. Uh, number five is the updated invoice for Police Services, uh, after we went over that. A, um, so that's the, that's revised one based upon the meeting before.
You get that in the mail, Bill?
Uh, is that good to send out?
Yeah, move, move to approve and submit.
Motion by John Paul, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Mary.
That's the hourly rate you said, okay.
For discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? On its way.
Good job. Uh, number six, uh, we had a request from the U.S. Geological Survey to use, uh, the meeting room here on October 30th, uh, in the morning for, uh, a, um, hearing they want to do. I just wanted to pass along, there's no conflicts in our schedule as it is right now, but just wanted to make sure it was okay with all of you.
Yeah, they're in here?
Yeah.
Great.
And since it's during regular hours, there won't be a charge for it. Uh, so it's number seven. We were copied on this. It's, um, a land use permit, uh, for Godnix, and...
Just extends the construction permit.
Yeah. Um, but it says the project's located at 259 North Main Street, but I'm not sure where...
They're, they're referring to the storage place that, that's, I think, where they get their mail.
Really is. Yeah. Yeah, so the location is going to be Route 7 North, but I wasn't sure about that, so I, I want to include it, because that, that was my feelings as well, but I just wanted to make sure that you were all aware of it. Uh, number eight is, uh, revised RFP to send out. I can, if you all approve this, we can send it out tomorrow, um, for the work on the office. Um, I do have a list of, um, contractors who have negotiated contracts with the state for state bid pricing, so I'm going to send it to them as well. Uh, and that's the first line, will, the, the first, uh, sentence there is going to be for, for that specifically. Um, I did change the dates on here, uh, have them due later on this month. Um, and I did change, uh, site visitor requests, we didn't schedule one, but if anybody wants one, just, I was going to have them call me and they can come down, rather than trying to get everybody here and do that again. Other, other than that, everything, uh, stayed the same as the previous version.
Um, my sense was that the last time, we maybe got too few bids because it was, they somehow got the impression we wanted it done, like, right away.
Mm-hmm.
And this seems to not say that any particular time of completion, which is fine, and we, is, is there, I'm looking quickly...
13, the very last one. It's just start as soon as possible.
As soon as possible and as responsible.
Yeah.
Okay.
We didn't, we, and that was, that is the same as last time. We didn't specify, like, we need to start it here to end here. We didn't.
Yeah.
Well, the only thing, the only thing that we should consider maybe adding is that we, we, we expect the completion to be done by town meeting day.
That's, that's fine.
That's the first Tuesday in March.
Actually, that wouldn't be bad, because that would give them, they could start in December, so, yeah.
Completion, just, project to be completed by the end of February.
Right.
barring any unforeseen things. Yeah, we understand that. It's a good winter project.
Yeah, it is.
It's just, we seem to be having a hard time getting it anywhere, getting somebody to do it.
Okay, so I can add a, a number 14, project to be completed by the end of February 2020?
Yes.
Okay. No problem. Be good with the rest of it?
Nothing changed, right?
Nothing, no, except just those, just those couple things. That was just to update it for this draft.
Good to go. Ship it.
And, uh, number nine, uh, is on your, uh, new business. Uh, VST sent our renewal, um, packet for our policy. Uh, there's a whole schedule for vehicles. Those were given to each of the departments to review. Uh, I've got almost all of them back, like, um, and these are the, uh, building locations, values, and how they, and the sheet on the back there is how they calculate it. So, uh, just wanted to give you the opportunity to go over them and, uh, see if you had any comments, questions, or if we're good with it as it is.
Yeah, I had one, um, Joe, what'd you have? I had the highway garage.
Well, it's not so much that, and, and I know there was an explanation of the, um, fire district.
Yes.
Things there included on that.
They are included, but they pay us, so.
Okay, we, we got that all. I, I remember that was on there. This helps them get a better rate or some such thing, okay.
So, which is my question, have department heads and the fire district folks seen this and the numbers?
Uh, they had the vehicle one. They had the vehicle one. I did not send them the, uh, look at the property one, but that's.
Why don't we do that?
Yeah, do that too.
Yeah, I, Byron, I, when you get this, I'd look at four, number four is the new highway garage. They have your building at, uh, you know, three quarters of a million, but they only have contents value of $10,000. It seems awfully light to me for what you have in that building.
That's what it is. I don't believe it's the trucks.
No, the trucks.
The trucks are separate.
It's separate.
Yeah, but you saw me.
Do you have more than ten?
Tools, whatever we have.
Yep.
Yeah. So I'm saying, I think you're, I mean, that, that to me just seems way light.
Yep. So should it be upped?
Well, let's let Byron take a look at the number and see what a real one is.
Alright, so we'll get those to department heads and department heads can let us know if they need adjustments.
Have it in the morning. No problem. Uh, was there any other buildings? Um, this one?
This was on my desk. Does, did anyone put this on my desk? You said you didn't. This was from you Byron? Okay. Alright, thanks. So we're done with the packet, Bill?
That is the packet.
Alright, great. What else you got for us?
Uh, everything on your desk you've, you already know about was there. So that, uh, you do have, you have, we received one bid, uh, as a result of our rebid process for the phone system. That's that envelope there.
So we had an original bid of $7,080 and thirty-six cents. Here's a sealed bid from the same company, right?
Yep.
Got a little, uh, little, um.
Yeah, it's good. It's all the documents digitally.
Great. Don't know if, uh.
Oh, good. Thank you.
So.
I'll get it later.
What changed here? Let's see. Five eighty-five there. Just like. I gotta do some math here. Sorry folks. But we don't pay tax, which was on the first one.
Yeah, he, he.
So I, if I'm reading this one correctly from the first one, the first one was 7,080 minus three sixty-six. So that would have been sixty-four, sixty-five hundred. This new one's at sixty-three thirty-eight. It's a little bit less.
So they did all of the adjustments before the final? Who is that, by the way? I mean, what's the name of the company?
APC Services and they have a P O box in Rutland.
Yeah, they're a local, they're a Rutland firm.
Is the board ready to make a decision?
We have the, are we doing this from capital or are we doing it from our budget?
I think it's capital improvement is what we thought.
Believe the intention was capital improvement?
That's what we, we thought. Upgrading the phone system.
That's fine.
That was the recommendation when we had the building committee meeting.
Okay. So I move, we accept the bid of six, three, three, eight from APC?
APC Services.
Services.
Motion by Mary, seconded by Sharon for discussion. Billy triple checked my math that I didn't miss something.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Alright.
And you pose, motion passes. I'll leave that back here for you, Bill.
Uh, the only thing I had to pass along, uh, from Bill Bauer said the electrician was finishing up replacing the lights there today. So that should be all, all taken care of.
It's up at the transfer station.
Yes.
Um, one of the things we need to do, not just with the transfer, but anytime we do any things, we need to keep some kind of tract of installations and stuff. Recently we had a light put up there. I think Matt Voity did it for us, put that outside light at the transfer station. When they just put the roof on, they noticed that light was full of water and they just jumped out and had the electrician and went out and bought another one and put it on where the one that was there is on, had a 10 year warranty. So we have to be, just somehow keep track of this stuff and, and let department heads and people know that if you have an issue before you jump out and spend money on something new. I know we authorize the electrician to move stuff, but not to replace the light.
Yep.
And that's a pretty expensive light. And then so, um, at some point, I think Larry's going to get it back to Matt and we'll probably get it warranted and we'll probably end up with a light without a home, but we'll have a light, we'll get it. So we just need to keep, you know, they're putting these in and try to make sure everybody.
No, I've got, I've got a asset file that I keep.
Right.
Those, those things in. So, yes.
And, and just when stuff is done on a building, if that's recent installation, we need to make sure we get the warranty going. So, so.
Okay. Good call, Joey.
So I just have a question and I, and I was looking at other things on this insurance thing. Um, they have the value of this station over here in central and it's seven fifty, seven, eight, sixty-six. And it costs us 1.4 or five to build.
Yeah, really.
Um, wouldn't, wouldn't it be valued at the cost of construction?
You would think because according to their information, we have replacement cost coverage unless otherwise noted.
Right. The contents is a hundred and fifty thousand in, in contents of the building, but I, I think the value of the building itself should be somewhere near the construction cost.
Sure.
So that might be something that we might make it, want to make a note of that.
So department heads and buildings, that thing should be scrutinized. Make sure.
I mean, they have this building in for 1.2 million, which I don't know, that's probably plenty, but I'm not sure if that even is, but, because this is such, but that, but I noticed the station there. That's off.
Good, uh, good catch.
Yep.
Bill, anything else?
Nope. That's all I got.
You put on my desk a little editorial here from the Herald over the last week called, uh, Save Rutland Business from a author in Proctor. And you highlighted the, um, statement that says, the question is why doesn't the, this is about the mall, by the way. The question is why doesn't the town step in and force the mall to actually make it a good area for business owners to move in? And to that I would say that you, you, you assume we have way more authority than we do as a select board.
That's what I took from that, that statement.
It, you know, we won't beat that horse, uh, again, but we have met with the mall, uh, we have heard their plans. Uh, the, the good news is they don't plan on just closing it forever and forgetting about it. So there are hopefully good things to come.
Yep.
So, uh, you know, everyone out there thinks there's a, some, some big shoe that's going to drop here with a update and there's really not. I mean, it's a work in progress. So thanks for highlighting that, uh.
Uh-huh.
Bill? Anything else for Bill? Board? Good?
Okay.
Alright. Barbara, Barbara Noyes pulling is absent Bill. Correct?
Yes. Tell us you're going to be there.
Okay. Norm Cohen is here, uh, member of the planning commission. Good to see you, Norm.
Thank you.
Okay. Our town clerk and treasurer is absent. Mike Rowe, town rec director. Good evening, Mike. How are you?
Good, thank you. Um, don't have much soccer is, uh, moving forward. We'll start to wrap up, uh, the closure and winterization of the parks coming soon. I know everybody hates to hear that, but winter is approaching sooner rather than later. Um, the Halloween party is on the Friday, the first at school from five to seven. Just seemed like the better day to do it in conjunction with our book fair.
We partnered with law enforcement to be there for that?
We will talk with law enforcement to be there and I'm, I'm assuming Officer Hool will be there as well. And you're my emcee. So I'll see you then. Um.
Who's the emcee?
You.
Have a good time.
Thanks for, thanks for doing that. Uh, other than that, things are moving, um, you know, like they always do at this time of the year. Budget, I gave a copy to my committee members and to Bill, uh, preliminary budget, um, to start. We can go right at our next committee meeting and move towards that. So other than that, uh, you know, it's getting fall. Things are, uh, we're getting work on the disc golf course done up at the park. So hopefully we'll either install that late fall or early spring.
I was asked, is that nine or eighteen?
It is nine right now.
Thank you.
Eventually, potentially we will go to eighteen. We kind of have a future plan, but we want to get nine first. So thank you to Jason and Byron and the highway. We're, uh, teaming together to get the course user friendly.
Are you guys trying it out as you go?
Uh, no, we really haven't tried it out. We just kind of looked at it and moved things, moved some trees, nut trees up, brush off to the side to make it as user friendly as possible. After the timber sale, it allowed us to do quite a bit of work. So, um, with the help of Jason and Byron, we've been doing a good job of getting the nine holes ready to go. So either late fall or early spring, we'll set it up and get it going. Other than that, I don't really have anything else unless you guys have something for me.
Uh, anything for Mike? You mentioned something important. Um, as Bill stated, budgets, uh, sheets have been sent out. So we should start in the next couple of few weeks, uh, schedule committee meetings at the, with your select board committee members and start to get the rough drafts done here. So we can be, have a good idea of what November looks like, you know, where, where we're at with budgets. So thoughts on that, board members? Good? Mike, thanks for everything.
Thank you.
Okay. If you're following along on the, uh, new business, we've handled A C, A C G. And we're about to handle B as well. So, uh, we'd invite Chief Dumas, uh, to come up. And who do you have with you?
We have new officer.
Come on up, Officer Hool. Chief, how are you tonight?
Very good.
We put on the agenda, um, uh, to meet our new school resource officer. So Amber, welcome.
Thank you.
You've been with us about a month now.
About a month.
And, uh.
Monday was officially a month.
Tell us a little about, about yourself.
Uh, my name, my full name's Amber J. Hool. I like to go by Amber. Um, I went to Castleton University and graduated with my bachelor's degree and I was hired by Rutland City in March of two thousand and eighteen, and I worked there until I was hired by Rutland Town as a school resource officer.
How do you like the school system so far?
I love it. It's awesome. I love working with the kids. They're, they're awesome.
Great.
As you know, uh, the other SRO, uh, has handed in his, uh, he has resigned at this point in time. I've been told that Amber's been literally a seamless transition as this has taken place. So I'm thankful for her and I'm thankful for all the years of service that John Sly has given us also.
Yeah. More to come on, uh, John Sly. So stay tuned. So.
Yes.
Yeah. But, uh, we're in a world of debt to that, that man for everything he did for the town. Him and John Paul with the creation of this, uh, police department 10 years ago and couldn't have done it without him. So. Amber, you got some big shoes to fill there, but I'm sure you'll do a great job. And I know my two daughters love you. So.
That's good to hear.
And, um, any questions for Amber?
Just your level of certifications, because you're, you're well qualified as well.
Yes, I'm, I'm level three certified, which means that I am as certified as they can get. And I have a lot more training than I want to receive, but, um, I'm certified.
We have some plans to, uh, I'd like to send it to what they call forensic interview school. That's kind of the latest thing when it comes to interviewing children. Since she's in a target rich environment to speak to children, there's an issue that comes up, I expect her to, when she gets the training to be able to talk to them and get the information and pass it on VCF and CFAC if need be. Also, uh, I know there's other, I know she wants to start, start teaching the classroom. We're looking at some different programs right now. So.
Great.
Skies limit at this point in time.
Do you have any questions for us?
I don't. Thank you.
Alright. Well, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Chief Dumas, what do you have for us?
Okay. Last two weeks, sorry I missed last meeting. I had a case I couldn't leave. I understand Ted took care of that. So.
Yes.
That's good. Uh, we had, uh, total of fifty-eight calls of service the last two weeks. Uh, we also had on top of that, we had uh, twenty-nine car stops and thirty-seven tickets were issued. Uh, also the VSP took thirty calls in this two week period for a total of eighty-eight calls for town of Rutland the last two weeks. So been busy. We have had issues with burglaries on Woodstock Avenue area near the borderline with the city. They had a lot of issues they're working on right now. I've been in contact with them. They're working on some angles here. Hopefully they'll be able to find something else soon and on that department anyways. Other than that, that's, that's all I have. I did get Bill's, uh, to do the budget, the paperwork. I will, Ted and I will start working on that. Get in touch with Mary and Sharon here very soon.
Good. Thanks.
I'm glad to see you don't, uh, every day that Amber punches in, that's not considered a, a case or a call.
Uh, no.
This is a, this is a better reflection of what the true call volume right now is in the town.
Correct.
So.
I think that's about all I have at this point.
What do we have for the chief?
Thanks.
Ted's truck is on the road.
Yes. I know Ted said thanks for, to Bill for, and the fire department for letting shoes in bay and tidied up for I don't know how long, a couple of weeks. Appreciate that. And, uh, Bill's suite really helped us out wiring the whole thing up and works good. Excellent vehicle. Will serve us for many years, I'm sure.
I have a, I, I don't know how, I, I, it's not meant as a complaint, an observation. Okay? Um, and I, I did have a complaint from a town resident who was a little upset because of the lack of presence on Grove Street during the paving on Route seven. Um, there was a lot of traffic, a lot of high speed traffic and it occurs day in and day out up there. So, but an observation is that people are a little unhappy with the cost of the police department and the lack of visibility. So do whatever we can to, we need to, we, I guess just be out there, you know, uh, Teddy was up on Grove Street today. I saw him. I didn't know who the black truck was that parked in the yard until he waved to me, but we figured that out pretty quick. That's my first thing. But it's, it's just something out there. Um, people, excuse me, are very aware of the budget for the police department and they want to see you guys. And most people's interaction, other than if they're having a burglary or a bad day is to, um, see you guys out there running radar and slowing traffic down and stuff. So it's just a observation or something and I wanted to pass that on and, and I know you got some new officers and some new things and maybe can work some stuff out and we can get our second constable out there when he's not doing his other duties as a town and just, just be out there. I think that, that'll help with. I think there's a lot of frustration now with, with folks, you know, that we're spending more, but we're not seeing more. So I wanted to pass that on to you, but, um, now that Route seven is done, they can go speed over there, but we seem to have picked up a few folks that like the back road, you know, so.
It's more scenic view.
Yeah, more scenic view and, and not seeing what they, what I want to see is you guys out there. So if, you know.
But you'll come up with a schedule because I know there's a lot of roads in town that have the same issue with speeding and, and, you know, folks are zipping right along. So.
I will, I will say to that, and I, I just bit my tongue as long as I could because I've been accused of being a great defender of this police department and I consider that a compliment. Uh, but, you know, we just heard in a two week pay period or a two week pay period that there was fifty-eight calls that four officers responded to.
Yep.
Correct, chief?
Probably three officers.
Probably three officers responded to. The call volume's higher than it's ever been in the town. And we've bought us, we've, we have spent the taxpayers' hard earned money on a speed cart. They've been, they've blessed us with approving another police officer. Uh, but it, and I would invite people that are concerned to come in and talk to the police department because we know that they're visible. We know what they're doing. And I hear the, I hear the comments too, but it, it does get a little frustrating because we see it here at town hall.
Right.
And, you know, I don't know from, from a visibility standpoint, what, what are people looking for more that you call nine-one-one, the police show up and they're here.
I, I just think with, with the folks that have the issues with speeding, they, they want us, they just want to see a car on the road on a regular basis, which is not going to happen until you got like ninety-seven cars. Cause then they can be everywhere at once.
Well, we just, and he just, and it's good to hear. You just reported, we issued thirty-seven fines for twenty-nine stopped cars in two weeks. I mean, that's a, John, what were you, when you were running radar, how many cars were you stopping?
That was an eight hour shift for me.
Right. The thing is.
Come on, I get a smile out of that.
No, and, and I, and I, like I said, this is from, it's not a criticism to the point of what they're doing. It's an observation that what I'm hearing from folks is that we are spending more money on our police department. So they expect to see more policemen. And we, we've increased by one and, and I, like I said, as time goes on, it'll work out. You get caught up on the cases that you got behind. The other thing is, is the state police are very well aware that we have another full-time officer. So we are going to get more of those calls. Calls that they might've been handling are now going to, I mean, I see the state police stop a car or two on Grove Street pretty frequently, you know, and it's, it's just some way of getting into a routine. That's not a routine, you know, maybe once a week, twice a week, you're here, there, random hours and it just, it eases people's frustration. But, but I want to make sure that, you know, we get it out there that these guys are working and then we have a kind of, hopefully people listen to our broadcast here tonight and know that these guys are not sitting around hiding in the closet someplace, you know, spending their money, that they are doing what they're supposed to be doing and, and.
John, what are your thoughts on this? You're, you've been in the department a long time. I mean, what? We don't have a visibility issue. We have a lot of calls they have to handle, right?
So it's, uh, a combination of the public perception that everybody wants a cop on their street and nowhere else. That, that's my explanation of it. And so if they only see a police cruiser once or twice a week, they don't think that's enough. They want more because it's their street. But they don't want to be stopped by the cop anywhere else in town.
No.
So it's kind of a, I don't really see it as an issue. I don't. But Grove Street is out of control right now. I'll give you that, Joey. And, and I do think that a lot of people that use it as a bypass have not stopped using it just because seven was finished. But, um, I am moving the speed cart up there tomorrow. That'll help some. And we should have some time next week to do some, some patrolling. So we'll, we'll get to it, but.
Yeah. I mean, like I said, these are observations that are coming to me and I'm passing them on to Ed. So he's aware of what's.
We're doing the best with what we got.
They really, we really are.
Do anything else.
I think the other thing is that people are frustrated coming off seven because I know because I live on seven. Um, I have never seen such a cluster mess as what's gone on with traffic control from the people putting down tar and what have you. So people are PO'd, they cut across. By the time they're on Grove Street, they're still PO'd and the nature of the beast is I gotta get to work, you know, and you're, you're held up out here or you pull out of a driveway. You get halfway down the road and there's cars coming right at you. So, I mean, I, part of that is the frustration. I know I've been and I know you have. Um.
You know, maybe, maybe we should do a, we can talk at the police committee level. We've beat this to death, but maybe we could do a, uh, public invitation to an open house or something and come, come meet your department, meet your officers and ask questions. What, what's it, what's an eight hour shift look like and why, if you feel like you should be in my neighborhood more, why aren't we seeing you more? neighborhood more, why aren't we seeing you more? So people can ask these candid questions, because I hear, we all hear it from time to time, people say, boy, you got, your police budget's increasing, and yet we're not seeing the officers, so maybe an open house.
People don't say much to me.
Actually, I've gotten in the last, I got it before, but in the last couple of months, I've got positive feedback.
Yeah. Well, we can talk about it at the committee, but it is what it is right now. Thanks for bringing it up, Joe, it's, you know, something that needs to be discussed, because we need to do a better job of educating the public and letting them know what the deal is, you know, so.
The other thing too is, if you're trying to run speed with a marked unit, and you've all seen it, once somebody comes by in the opposite direction, they're flashing all of the other people, warning them, so a marked unit is, it's difficult to maintain, as, if you had an unmarked unit, nobody sees you, you're first to see them. We were going to do something, Bill, on the town website about putting the two unmarked vehicles on, so townspeople know, but.
Discussing pictures of the vehicles and things like that we want to do, so people are aware of what they look like, so.
Right, but I'm just saying the residents might not be aware that, that a patrol is going on, because the vehicle's not marked.
And we can highlight it on the Facebook page and so on too, Billy.
So which would you rather have? An unmarked vehicle, so people aren't flashing lights, so you actually catch the speeders, or visibility for the unmarked vehicles, so townspeople know we're spending their taxes wisely?
That's why I started my comments by saying it's the yin and the yang of it, is that, but if you're going, if you're serious about speed control, you can't use a marked vehicle, because it's too random.
You guys done with me now?
After all that, you got anything for us, chief?
I have nothing else to say.
All right.
Thanks, Ted.
John Paul, anything else as health officer?
No.
How did I blow right by Byron?
Pretty easy.
Jeez. That certainly wasn't done on purpose.
See if you got your road paved.
Patient man.
How are you, Byron?
Good.
You saved the best for last, in my opinion, so.
Well, I don't have a whole lot for you tonight.
Right, Norm?
I did want to bring to you your attention, there's been a new garage structure built on Lynette Drive. I had a citizen call me in regards to it, they thought it was too close to the road. An investigation shows that the road, I don't think, is exactly in the center of the right-of-way, and the garage is probably, literally maybe two feet outside of the town's right-of-way, but it still puts it within nine feet of the tar, so it's fairly close to the road. I don't think we have an issue or a leg to stand on there to make them move the structure away from the road, but I just, in case someone else hears something about that.
Well, just, you know, let me, if we had zoning, we would have front yard and side yard setbacks, so buildings would have to be away from things like that.
I hope to have a preliminary budget for you next time.
Do you want to meet with Highway?
I should be caught up on one more, I got one more project on the North Grove Street area, so I can get my grant money. I do have another question for you, and that's regarding the school. They are putting their snow plowing out to bid, and in looking at their bid document, the scope of work says, "Provide snow plowing, sanding, and salting is required in all Rutland Town school parking lots." And then the next thing is required materials, and that says, "All necessary equipment to complete the scope of work described above in a timely manner and prior to, throughout the day," blah, blah, blah. Nowhere in there does it say that the contractor needs to supply materials.
Salt and sand.
Right. So I don't know if the assumption is that the town is still going to supply sand and/or salt materials for the school or not. The problem I have is if, say, Fabian gets the bid, and he wheels into the salt shed and he wants to get loaded, how do I track that? How do I know that he's only salting the school, and he's taken two ton out of his truck, and he only needs 500 pounds down at the school, perhaps the other ton and a half? Does he bring it back? I don't think you're going to see a contractor wanting to do that.
In years past, we've plowed that, is that correct, or not?
No, Donnie Quirk has always plowed it, and he doesn't do any other outside work, so it's, what salt you put on his truck stays in his truck until the next storm.
Is that something that the highway department would be interested in picking up, and the school could reimburse?
Well, I was asked by Ryan down at the school if we wanted to bid on that, so that was my other question, do we want to bid on that? Problem I have is I'm not equipped for it to plow that, I would have to plow it with a loader, to do that, I would probably would want at least a 12-foot pusher to put on the front of that. I can only spare maybe an hour and a half, two hours at the most in the morning, early to clear the school.
That sounds like a no.
And it just.
No.
Theoretically, I think it could work, but logistically, when you get into a real storm situation, because no storms are exactly the same, you may have problems and issues. So I don't think it's something that we should do, I don't think it's something the municipality should bid against private contractors.
No.
And so, no, I don't think we should bid against it, but two, I think we should also cut the apron strings here, and if they're having outside contractors come in to bid that, then the outside contractors need to supply their own materials.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep.
If I was to agree with that, then I will pass that on to Ryan. I haven't heard a whole much lately in regards to Windmere and where they're at. I did have a conversation with Carl and told him he needs to, you know, they need to have a formal survey. He brought in a set of plans to bill, but those were just construction plans, and those aren't what we need. We need an actual survey and a mile hour when we decide that, yes, it's okay, we're going to accept the road, then we need a mile hour to put on file.
I think we were pretty clear with what we wanted to see from them.
So I think he's, you know, a little clearer in his mind.
Yeah.
So I don't know how that will, if he'll get a surveyor to get that done this fall or not, but.
Because it wasn't just the survey, it was also any easements that were needed.
And I, yes, we also needed easements, and those need to be also mapped out on a.
Right, for whatever utilities are there.
And so I had all that conversation with him.
Good, okay.
And told him to call me if he needs any more information, you know, or a surveyor needs information, whatever, you know, make sure we get everything square. Other than that, that's all I have for you. We did have a couple of street signs stolen on North Grove Street, so those have been ordered, and when they come in, we'll get them replaced.
Do we have the 25-mile-an-hour signs up everywhere they should be now?
I think almost everywhere, there might be a street or two that have been missed, but they might have one sign or something, we'll add more.
And are we able to post Ranberry Road, or not?
Did we do Ranberry?
Been posted.
Been posted, okay.
Or at least the sign's put up.
Okay.
Cars have been removed, too.
What's that?
Cars have been removed from the right-of-way.
Did you have a conversation with them?
You might have to put one halfway down, Byron.
And Robert Clark left a set, left two sets of plans for Ranberry Road. I gave one set to Bill, the other sets by my chair there. He indicated they're waiting for formal approval from the city. He thought everything was okay at the engineers, city engineers level, from there down, I guess everything was okay, there may be a little bit of political pushback, that's what's been rumored, but I don't know, not sure about that.
Say that again?
There may be some political pushback. You could get above the city engineers level, then you get into the political level, the board alderman. From what I've heard, there might be a couple aldermen that are a little concerned about extending water to the town.
If you could remind them that a member of the select board kindly allowed an easement to go across her property for the water loop that they wanted to construct and have constructed, so we were good neighbors, and we would appreciate it if they would be as well.
Do you know names, you don't have to say on camera?
No, that's just second-hand information I got from Robert Clark.
Okay. That'd be poor form.
Yeah, it would be, but some things just don't go away, Josh.
Well, we're going to try.
Oh, no, I'm just saying, there's just some, things are hard to go away.
Okay. Anything for Byron?
Good, thanks, Byron.
Good, thanks. Set up a highway committee meeting and budget stuff, after you get your.
Give me 10 days anyways, yeah.
Okay, it's 7 o'clock, and on the agenda, we warned, under D, board to hold public hearing on the energy plan portion of the Rutland Town Plan. About board members had time to review the energy plan. Barbara and Norm are here from the planning commission. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to address the proposed energy plan? Barbara, refresh my memory on our timeline, tonight's a public hearing, and then the board, after tonight, could make a final decision?
For tonight?
I would.
Yeah, yeah, anytime after the public hearing, which is number six, if you count all of yours and any of the two.
Yes.
And in the meantime, the amount of energy, renewable energy being generated in the town keeps going up.
Good.
And in fact, once Arctic Creek 1 and 2 come online, the town has met its target.
Great.
And that's without the hydro.
Benj, yeah.
And it's just the solar.
So just as a reminder, on page 48, we have added the number 10 on the criteria for net metering preferred sites, and that addresses that once the town has met its renewable energy target, then there's higher scrutiny, and we look at the potential local benefits must far exceed any negative tax, environmental, and scenic impacts, so that was one of the things, changes we made.
And that's one of the things that I can't support, because I think that's discrimination against some of the landowners, that if you didn't get in on this in the beginning, then you have to go through a higher level of proof or whatever, and more costs and more things, and we continue as a board and as a town to pile more and more demands on landowners to do things. We started with the view sheds, and you have to prove that, you know, you can do a project on your land and you can meet these requirements, and now we put this in here, and I think at some point it's got to end, that we keep asking and asking of the landowners with nothing, taking without any compensation. You've just taken a right away from a landowner, we took some away with our town plan from the landowners, and we keep doing it, and I can't support that. We just keep piling it on, hiring more of it, and it's just not right. To me, that's just, like I say, it's discrimination, that if you're not on the ball, then you're discriminated against, and you have to go and, more additional costs to do a project, and I just don't see it. You know, the idea of getting our foot in the door, as JP said, and have a seat at the table and all this stuff, I understand it, and I think that's beneficial to the town, but at some point, that's how this stuff's just got to come to an end.
Barbara?
I think number 10 was put in there mostly for large projects, and.
Doesn't say that, Barbara. It says anything in there, so if a guy wants, somebody wants to do a couple acres, or they want to do whatever, everybody's got to be under a higher level of scrutiny now, if we approve that, and I don't like that.
There's some other aspects of that list that address, like agricultural lands, and so we've been approving 500 kilowatts here, 500 kilowatts there, because they're smaller, there's less environmental impact, and that sort of thing, and at least, I think the planning commission's line, number 10 was put in there, just so we don't keep getting these, you know, Arctic Creek 1 and 2 is 8 kilowatts, and anything over 2 is a large, so. So I think there are things in here to allow these other projects to still go through. I mean, the tax impacts not going to be that much, the environmental impact. And I know that's how the planning commission sees this.
Well, I'm looking at it from a landowner's side, that it's just one more hurdle, one more thing we got to get through, and there are a lot of landowners out there that may feel the same way, I don't know, I'm the only one here, because I'm hanging, you know, nobody comes in, and I don't know if folks have seen this and understand what the town is proposing. A lot of what's in here is good stuff, don't get me wrong, and I support a lot of it, I just don't support additional restrictions on landowners, I just, I have a hard time with that.
Thanks, thanks for your comments.
Yep.
Further question, Mary?
Yeah, I do have a question. Bill put the energy portion of the plan on here, but are we not also voting on the scenic portion?
That already was voted on, there's.
Great, thank you.
Fragmentation, very small section, I think it's pages 72 and 73, 74, and then the mat on 75.
Okay, so.
That's to make these steps.
So we would be adopting the energy plan as well as the amendments that you just referred to?
Yeah, I mean, as it's proposed, you're adopting the whole plan.
That's what I thought, okay.
Not as amendment.
Not as, not the amendment, the whole plan.
Yeah, and so the clock starts over at the end of 8 years?
Yes, okay.
I think there's, you know, I think there's, like Joe DiNardo said, I think there's a lot of good components to this, but I think, once again, there's a lot of stuff in here that's just in here, to make it more complex, busier, you know, I think this is, could be part of the problem that 10 or 15 years ago, zoning was defeated, because a basic zoning document got out of hand and became.
A bible.
Yeah, I mean, it was as thick as, as thick as, like you said, the phone book or the bible, so, you know, I went through and highlighted some stuff, Barb and Norm, and, you know, it's just, to me, it's just nitpicking stuff. Is it enough to vote a document like this down? I don't know, but, you know, for example, on page 41, by 2050, electric vehicles are estimated to cover more than 90% of the light-duty fleet in Rutland Town. It is expected that by 2050, there will be 4,572 electric light-duty vehicles in the town. Well, right now, as a country, in 2019, 31 years earlier, we have 2.1% of all vehicles are electric. That, in 30 years, that is a heck of a, sort of a wishful thinking, in my opinion, and it goes on to say that the town will buy electric vehicles when cease, you know, I don't know, I mean, I just think there's a lot of stuff in here, Barb, that, it's just a lot, it just makes it unattractive to me.
Can I say something?
Please.
Because I've worked on town plans, and not just in this town, but in others. A town plan is, first of all, an inventory of what we have, and then a projection into the future of what we want to do with what we have and what we can do to aspire to some goals, and I've heard this argument about too many pages, that's what we heard last time, too many pages. The reality is, a plan or even a zoning ordinance, a plan is not something you sit down and read through, there are sections that are applied as the circumstances arise, and two big things that arise that this plan is really important to address are Act 250, large developments, and Section 248, energy proposals. We found that we didn't have some of the details before, so that we could address these things adequately when we went in before a district environmental commission or the public utility commission. We have them. Is it nitpicky? It's called detail, and yes, we can do a two or three-pager, but it won't do anything for the town. When you put the detail in and you show the thoughtfulness, and these folks have done an enormous amount of work on this, you show the regulators that we know where we're going as a town, and that they need to pay attention to what our goals are as stated in our town plan. That's why the work is in here.
Well said. Barbara?
And it says, "See at the table," especially for Section 248, especially, you see, what this is designed for. They described a lot of components of this, they want to see this. They, they described a lot of components of this, you want to see this. And I think the planning commission went, um, even further than that and put in some more detail and put in some more, um, you know, what the town is really looking for and not looking for here. Just clear language, not just meeting that 14-page checklist, but there are other things in here that's very Rutland Town specific. And you can look, you know, there's, there's different parts of this plan. There's what's being used for energy now, there's what needs to happen to become 90% renewable by 2050. And that's some of the electric car, um, just the jump in that, the jump in electricity for heating and all that. But the real crux of this for Rutland, for the town, is, is the last couple of pages of how, how the town's wanting to do that. And in a lot of respects, it's educating or even presenting workshops, or the town is an example. Getting, getting experts out there and taking advantage of the financial programs that are out there to help all kinds of income levels. So, that's, that's, that's the real Rutland Town message at the end there. The first part is, is the modeling and all that kind of stuff of how, how we could possibly get to 90% by 2050. And those numbers, yeah, I mean, every, every town looks at those numbers and goes, whoa, you know, how are we ever going to do that? But it's those last few pages that start chipping away at, um, at how you can do this.
Further comments or questions?
I would just like to say one thing about Mary.
Norm, sure.
Sometimes in the practice of law, you get a case that doesn't go away. And sometimes you get cases and you just work on and work on and work on and you know they resolve. It takes years, I have one to 10 years. That's what this felt like. And, but the detail is there for information. Some of it's aspirational, it's not directed, some of it is hand down by the state and you do the best you can. I think that I think you have to balance the equation and the scope of things. Every word was weighed for its effect and for its likely weight. And I understand where you're coming from and all the things that I'll look at. Start to say the best, when you think you're out of line, yeah. Is all everything acceptable, yeah. Of course, we try so hard. Can't make everybody happy with every word you say.
Well, I appreciate your comments.
I respect your, your observations.
So, the board can vote on this tonight? The board could put it on the, uh, put it on the agenda for the 15th and, uh...
Are we out of our public hearing?
No, I don't believe yet. Do we have to be out of our public hearing?
Well, I was going to make a motion.
We would have to be to vote, wouldn't we?
Yeah.
Okay, so I will...
I did, I did, I, I think I'd like some more time to consider, uh, Joey and Mary's comments and Barbara's. I would move we table this till our next meeting.
I second it.
So, we have to declare ourselves out of the public hearing first, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, alright. Alright, so at 7:14, we're out of the public hearing. Uh, any, um, decisions to be made?
Just a request, Bill, would you, rather than just do this one section, would you put the whole complete plan together and make sure that we all have a copy of it with all of the changes that we've made up to this point? Thanks. So, we know what we're voting on.
So, John Paul, you were going to suggest that we would wait two weeks before we make a decision and put it on the agenda for the 15th?
I'd move the table until the 15th.
I second it.
Tabling till the 15th, seconded by Sharon.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, but since I never got to make the motion, there's nothing to table. So, why don't we just put it on the agenda for two weeks from now? I'm good with that.
That's fine. Bill, we'll put on the, uh, put it on the agenda, please. Okay. And we'll, uh, do our due diligence and make sure people know what's on the agenda again. And, uh, we'll, we'll have a decision in two weeks, hopefully, one way or the other, so. And it certainly hasn't gone unnoticed, the work you folks have put into this, your entire board. So, thank you for your commitment to this and, you know, maybe what Jerry Stern said is right, so. Alright, thanks. What's next?
I know you're in charge. You tell us.
Alright.
You got to talk to Chris unless he has anything or has he done?
He's done.
Who's that?
Chris is, you're all done, Chris? You're all done? You have any fire department issues other than trying to, whatever you did? Okay.
Alright, uh, Devin Neary from the regional planning commission is here. Devin, come on up. How are you?
How are you guys?
Good. Sorry to make you wait.
That's fine.
Board to hold public hearing on transportation alternative grant for the proposed sidewalk project on Route 7 North near McKinley Avenue. Is this on our desk somewhere, Bill? Didn't have any paperwork. Do you have something for us?
I do, yeah. Um, and I can forward along more paperwork.
Thank you, thank you.
That is the grant application guide, the statute, and then the application itself.
Okay.
And I'll be happy to share that. It's all available on the Transportation Alternatives Program website on...
Give our viewers at home a sort of a quick overview of what this is all about.
You want history on the specific project or just the grant program?
Yeah, sure.
So, the grant itself, uh, the Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP, um, is an annual grant program. Um, the statute's available in that handout. This funds scoping, design, construction projects for a variety of, um, different transportation related, um, projects. The past two years, it's been dedicated to stormwater mitigation, but this year it's been opened back up to essentially any projects. Um, a big highlight for this particular program is bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, which, um, is the particular project that the town seems to have in mind. Uh, John Paul reached out to myself and the state, um, a few months ago when Route 7 was being reconstructed, asking about complete streets requirements. At that point, the design and engineering had already been finalized and there were no changes to the configuration of the road or any pedestrian facilities. So, the state and the planning commission, um, uh, essentially went over the project details, um, especially with John Kaplan, who is the bicycle and pedestrian program coordinator for the state of Vermont. And they suggested, along with us, this particular grant program. So, that project is extending sidewalk facilities down Route 7 North past, uh, McKinley? Or McKinley to the, the bridge or beyond. So, there's, um, some serious costs associated with that. This program has $300,000 available per project. There are a lot of requirements for this grant. It's not a light lift. Um, there's four public hearings. This is some federal highway money, so, um, there's a lot of requirements. However, it's also a lot of money and it's an 80/20 match. So, um, there's two essential ways you could go about this. There's either the design and engineering or scoping first. Um, I will tell you that this project has a timeline of three to four years before completion. So, if you're looking at scoping into engineering, construction, then you'd be looking at eight years before you're putting down any facilities. If you went direct to design, engineering, construction, you'd be looking at about three to four years, which is pretty standard for these projects. There's a lot of moving parts between landowner easements and right-of-way permitting. Uh, the state has looked at it and determined it's viable. We've also talked to the district staff. They also think it's viable. So, at this point, it's really a question of which of those two do you want to go for? Are you interested in applying? This particular public hearing is a requirement for, to apply for the grant program, is having a public hearing about the project. Personally, from the planning commission, I think it's a great idea. There's clearly a gap in service for pedestrian facilities along that section of the road, especially considering there is a school on Post Road and safe routes to school laws. Certainly try to promote extensions of pedestrian facilities.
So, there's a pinch point if you're coming south on 7, right in front of Mr. Twitter's, where the breakdown lane just ends so that any pedestrian or bike rider is forced into that lane of traffic going south. And it's a dangerous situation. The sidewalk from the city is up at Comcast. And then Pradicos put in their own gravel path and we did get permission to use gravel to keep the cost down. But the plan is to just continue that path right down to where the breakdown lane stops on the other side of Mr. Twitter's. And what that does is it opens up the town school to any pedestrian traffic and it opens up the west side for people on the east side of Route 7 that want to get over there. So, it, it, it's kind of a win-win for the town, but it also gets rid of a problem that I've observed over the years in the town of people getting cut off by vehicles when they're, they've got nowhere to go because there's that curb structure, those marble curbs that they put in. And I think those curbs are in the state right of way. When I talk to them, so we won't have the landowner issues because even skips driveways in the state isn't...
That's probably true. I mean, that's a four-lane highway.
Right, right. So, we're not gonna, at least the preliminary to me was, we're not going to have acquisition costs because the state has right of way and they're going to give us permission.
It starts at skips and goes how far north?
It's, uh, well Comcast, it's going to actually start, uh, in front of, you know where Paul's Cleaners is?
Yep.
That's where the city sidewalk ends.
Okay.
So, it would go from the end of the city sidewalk all the way past to Mr. Twitter's.
You wouldn't go all the way to the traffic lane? Or did you figure the breakdown?
Breakdown lane would serve. Yep. It's a good breakdown lane. It's a wide breakdown lane.
Certainly, I'd explore, you know, explore all options, especially with the bridge consideration and the crossing consideration. There is no crosswalk facility there to get you over to that side. Not to say that there maybe couldn't be at some point.
What bridge are you talking about?
At the north end of Route 7, right across from, right before Post Road, right? There's a bridge right there.
Right, where the cross, where the light would be. I mean, it would make more sense to go as far as to where the light would be and have a crosswalk there.
Sure.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'd be all in favor of that. I was just worried about costs getting out of control, that's all.
Here's a question. I know, and I'm, I like the idea and it would address that little Act 250 problem we had.
Right.
When we, there was a permit denial because...
You fixed that down there on the rental card.
Right. Um, so, last time we were sort of talking scoping study because we wanted to explore where the sidewalk could run. But this is sounding more like, do we really want to wait eight years?
After listening to this, I don't.
Yeah, so we go, if we go straight to engineering and we don't have to worry, which I think we can do if we don't have to worry about land acquisition costs.
The only place you're going to have any trouble, Mary, is right there in the corner of McKinley and Route 7, where the appliance places, that bank's kind of seat. That's going to be a little, there's about 100 feet there. That's going to be a little bit of an issue. But I think that that can be designed to work.
Yeah, the only other thing I'd mention is there might be stormwater considerations.
Yes.
For these projects. And, um, you know, the, the idea of gravel or concrete or asphalt should also be explored too, especially for maintenance, um, winter maintenance especially. So, you know, that's something I, you should discuss with Byron.
Sure.
Really explore. Um, as for preparation of the application, um, it is a big application. We certainly can help. Um, there is a good amount of time, luckily, but even with the November 22nd deadline, there's a lot to do in a little amount of time.
Well, Bill's anxious to go to school on the application process, so we should be able to meet that deadline.
Um, so... Bill and I have been through that before, so.
We've also in the past used, um, independent contractors. Is that anything we want to consider?
Yeah, um, I know Castleton is, I think, moving forward with a contractor to, you mean to write the application?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, is that right? What kind of money does that cost?
I, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head for this particular...
November 22nd is the deadline?
Between, uh, regional planning commission and Bill, I mean, we should be able to get this done, right?
Have you seen the application, Bill?
Yes.
Is it something you can manage?
I, I, I...
Alright, that's a yes. Alright, I'll accept that as a yes.
Let's just make one...
We did a good job on the last one. You willing to add to Clark? We did a good job on the last one.
I thought you did. I mean, this did, I know this is more involved, but you handled the last one just fine. Alright.
Mary, thoughts?
Yeah, no, just, you know, as a backup, um, we've used Susan in the past. Why don't you check and see what that cost would be? Okay, and then if you get to a pinch point...
Could have her on call or in reserve. Alright.
And see what her fees are anyway and then we'd know, yeah.
Great. I think it's a great idea. I'm excited for it, so.
Yes, great, thank you. And thank you very much for coming and your help too. Couldn't do it without you. We know that.
We're here to help, too, Mary.
Well, thank you.
Happy to do it.
So, do you need a letter? I mean, as part of our application, does the select board have to endorse the concept?
Um, I, is there a municipal resolution? I wouldn't be surprised if there would be.
I think there would be. So, I would move that we endorse, um, the, the project and the application for a, not a scoping study, but the engineering and design study.
Second.
Motion made. Second for discussion. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay.
Thanks again, Devin.
Take care.
Thank you.
This could help us on the other end, Mary, too.
Yes, yes, yes.
This'll make that other part look a whole lot better.
Yeah, I'm going to give it to Bill. Alright.
Byron?
Yeah. Huh, okay, so, I move to amend my motion and make it engineering, design and construction.
Second.
Motion amended, seconded by John Paul.
Thank you, Byron.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion amended. Uh, committee meeting updates. We had our second, uh, fire station committee meeting, uh, replacement. Good discussion once again. Uh, you can see the bullet points here. The, the biggest thing we need to do is, we need to talk to the, we need to talk to the landowner and wrap this up or not.
Mrs. Barrett is still on board to give the town additional land behind the building. And in her, she has no desire to change where her access to that land of hers is. She doesn't, she doesn't want it moved to the other side of the building. And I tried to, um, convey some advantages because in my mind, it would be advantageous to both parties if it was moved. Um, she's told me I could talk to her until I was blue in the face, but the family had talked about it and they want it just left where it is. So, um, once we, um, I pretty, I know about where the lines, basically what the building would have to do is just shift to the east.
Yeah, we could configure the building on the lot, knowing the driveway's going to be on the west. We can do that.
You know, we could do that. Um, we just have to determine what we want from her, another half acre, three quarters of an acre. The, uh, ability to build a new building there without taking the other one down is still there. There'll be some filling, there's, you know, that bank can be filled out to extend that and even just slope it regardless. You don't have to put any money into a tie, you know, wall or anything. And there's a kind of a crater out back there that'll need to be done, but it can all be done.
So, the next step would be to lock down the, the land?
Well, the next step is for me, you know, and this is a difficult time and we, we may have to get a different, you know, I've talked to Mark Kressel a couple times. I thought he would have gotten back to me, um, but he hasn't. And now we're getting into this time of year when he becomes less and less available. So, I'm going to call him again tomorrow and tell him we need to finish this up like in the next two weeks. And, and she just, we need to identify her property line so she'll know where the 50-foot road goes and where it turns. And then our line on the east side, I think is pretty far established. And then what we, you know, we might need a half acre or three quarters of an acre out there, but she's still on board with that. And, um, so, I think we can move forward with that.
This board is in agreement, uh, I'm polling the board now. This board is in agreement, we keep that fire station in the same location.
Yes, yeah, I think so. We have water and sewer there and I'm good with that.
Me, you, you, Mary?
Yeah, I mean, certainly the same piece of land, but if you're, I mean, I don't have any problem with you changing it or reconfiguring it or anything. Is that what you mean?
No, my, my, there, at the committee level, there's been discussions, the suggestion was maybe we build a fire station at Northwood. Maybe we...
Oh, 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 no, no.
Somewhere else, maybe we do this and that.
I don't think the people of this town are going to accept that.
Why?
I think we get, because I think they want it to stay where it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You've already got the Taj Mahal over here.
I wouldn't call that the Taj Mahal. And I don't like people referring to that.
That's only because it's got your name on it.
It has nothing to do with that. That is an adequate building that the committee that built that went, we tried to make it not a showy place, but to be effective and efficient for the department and to last a long time. And this new station needs to be equally as nice looking and well-constructed. We can go different routes and different design probably. And we should've learned a lot from the last one as to not what to do or who to hire. I'm very unhappy with that part of it. But that building is, was not elaborate and it was not done to be showy or to whatever. And so I prefer we didn't refer to it as that. We don't need to duplicate those same things.
The good news is we have consensus that we keep the fire station in the same plot of land, regardless of a little reconfiguration. And that we have an answer now for Mrs. Baird, which has been, we haven't been able to advance the ball here on this project.
Well, I kinda may have dropped the ball a little bit, but.
Well, I'm not pointing fingers. I'm just saying we've been waiting.
I am.
So now with Chris and Larry, we have some movement here.
Yep. We just need to get the property lines done up so we can go out there with her and say, this is what we'd like to do and this is where we want to be and move forward.
And the final, the final thing that I'll bring up and without opening a huge can of worms is, we've had two committee meetings. The expressed desire of our PD, because they have no room here, is to move in with the fire department. There was another idea of possibly taking back the Cheney Hill building, which has more negatives than positives in the committee's opinion. There was also a thought of renovating downstairs here. The PD is adamantly against that. Does this board support at this time, at least investigating, putting the fire, the police department in their own bay at the McKinley Avenue Fire Station?
Yes.
Yeah, I do. Because it, my reasoning would be because none of the other alternatives offer a place to house the vehicles. And those vehicles, we should try to get them in out of the elements if we can. I like that idea.
That's a yes, yes. I'm a yes. Mary?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
I'm not convinced.
Well, if it was a vote, it'd be three to two right now. So the committee will move on with the understanding we should at least investigate this further, putting PD and the fire department together.
It works in other communities. Some pluses from my point of view is, if you use a common building, you don't duplicate things like heating and those types of resources, septic and all that. You have everything, you know, it just sometimes makes it work. Personally, I would've liked to have looked at it when we did this building. But I was, when we did that building, we were told and under no certain terms, would there be any police department involvement in that building, which I think was a mistake at the time. But we'll go there.
It's not six and one. It's a small lot, but this is a much better lot.
This is a bigger lot.
Once we get it, nailed that.
Whatever. But we'll be okay. I think, you know, we can make it work.
All right, we have, uh, we have a direction. All right. So we'll let Joey get with Mark Kursell and we'll warn a committee meeting here in the next 12, you know, say four weeks. Okay? All right, good discussion. All right.
Any other committee, do you have any other meetings while I was missing?
No, I don't think so. Any other committee meetings?
Sounds good.
Okay. A, B, C, D, E, G. We do need an executive session for personnel matter.
And I would add for a potential litigation.
Potential litigation, okay.
I'll ask a question.
Yes.
The meeting with the school board chair, was that just gonna be informational or is there something there we needed to discuss?
Possible, if Matt arrives, it's gonna be an executive session for possible land acquisition. So, Matt, Mike? He's on his way.
Okay. Well, we can do our part.
We have our part to do first.
I'm not sure that's executive session. Is that an executive session?
I don't know. We don't know what, I don't know anything about what he's gonna, yeah.
I believe it's, it's worthy of executive session due to the nature of the discussion.
Yeah, I don't agree with that. I don't see what the basis is for an executive session. He's coming to talk about whether we're interested in purchasing some property with the school.
Yeah, why would we go in executive?
That's the board, that's certainly the board's opinion. I am of the opinion that it could be because there's, um, could be price negotiations. Plus there could be some security discussions around the acquisition of this land to do with the facility up there.
We're talking about the concept first, which I think should be a public discussion so people know what we're thinking. If we have to get into the particulars that would put us at a disadvantage, then yeah, we can go.
And I want to be as transparent as possible, but anytime it involves security, it doesn't, in my opinion, need to be aired out for everyone to see. But we can do whatever the board's pleasure. First, we need to go and, is there anything else under new business to cover besides for that?
Oh, just a reminder about The Circle. We will lose our editor after her last edition in February. So a call for anyone who might be interested in editing The Circle, please let us know.
That's certainly a publication we don't want to lose as a town, so. Sharon, anything for the board?
Nope.
Joe?
I've said enough.
Mary?
No.
John?
I'll say.
Motion to go into executive session.
Go move.
Sharon? Seconded by Joe.
Second, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. All right, so the board's out of executive session. It came out at 7:54. Was there any action to be taken?
No.
Not at this time, okay. So on the agenda, we had a request from the school board chairman, Matt Branshott, to meet with the board about a land concept. So Matt, the floor is yours, sir. You're here, so.
Thank you. So I was hoping to have a discussion if the, I guess I'll start out with first, that there's a piece of property behind the school for sale. And just short of 20 acres. And then the local realtor had sent me an email a week or two ago. We had expressed some interest on the school side. It abuts the back of the school and runs up almost to the entrance with Glenn Dam. So it's, anyway, the realtor, so she sent it to me. And we passed it around the school board. It's something that I think the school, you know, would be interested in picking up. How we could use that, I don't know. But one of the interests for us is getting our kids up to Northwood Park. Most of our games are played up there. And so anyway, that came in and then the, obviously, I think one of the board members had referred me over to you guys and said this is certainly a town issue as well involving the sidewalk, possibly on Post Road, whether that sidewalk can go through the back of the school now and up to Northwood. We're already using a lot of those trails anyway. So anyway, and that's what led to me coming down here. So before I got, before we went into anything, my thought would be, you know, if, after the initial discussion, but it be put into executive session so we could have a talk. But the first question, is this something that the town's interested in? Is this something the town is not interested in? It seems to make sense to me. And it's one thing that we would, you know, need to find a use for it for the school. But the need overwhelmingly for us is also, it's apparent at this point, we're obviously combined with the town. But not only that, our fields are up there. So we have the kids going back and forth and we're going up Post Road. We've talked about a sidewalk ever since I lived there in the 90s. And that's taken a long time for a variety of reasons. But, you know, this may alleviate the need for that, may save an awful lot of money being able to also link up with the trail system and actually incorporate the school into that as well. So it just seemed to me to be a unique opportunity that I'm not necessarily sure that either the school or the town should pass up on.
Okay. Questions for Matt?
So on this map, where's the property that you're talking about?
Is that the triangle? That triangle, I believe JP.
It's that triangle with Grover labeled on it. It actually says 55.53 acres underneath it. And, but it's really, the real number is down below that. It looks like 18 on this map. I think it was about, I thought it was actually 1942. I think that's what it is, 19.42 acres. I think the 55, 53 is all those lots that appear to go, I think that's about northerly. The ones that are in that light gray are, have never been developed on Grover and those are for sale as well. But it's only for sale.
Oh, gotcha.
My understanding it's for sale is the entire chunk. Knowing at this point, they're not gonna start piecing out the lots. They don't have any desire to be the developer on the remainder of that. So my understanding that Red Grover at this point is finishing up, so.
And how close does that actually get us to Northwood?
What's that?
How close does that actually get us to Northwood?
Right up in that corner again, which is.
We're right back in the same place.
Doesn't get us into the Northwood Park though.
Is that Chisana Drive?
Yep. And so it looks like there's Goodrich, which has the road already running across it. It runs right through the Goodrich parcel. And then I think that puts us right at the entryway. That's Sanborn Drive and Chisana. But I think that's more, the road comes across to go up to Glenn Dam and Sanborn. And it looks to me like, it looks like the last name is Warwick, where the actual start of the road travels over, I'm guessing by looking at it.
So we've had some discussions with some of those property owners you just listed off and they've showed very little interest in partnering with us on right-of-way and easements. Is that, that's correct, right, Mary?
Well, the last was, we sent a letter out to the three that we wanted to get an easement across. And we've heard from one as a no and the other two, I don't think we've heard from.
And so what's interesting here is, you know, part of this is just using, I would think you just use the existing road that's already there. So, I mean, obviously that would be a concern for people, whether they wanted people going across their property or not. And Mike's done a lot of work up there that I see.
It's private property.
That's a private road anyway.
What's that? Yep. The, no, no, what I'm saying is it's already there. So the use isn't, I mean, people are already walking over that road as far as I knew anyway and have been, so. I don't.
I don't know where everybody's, so anyway, I have to orient.
We're looking at this. This is.
No, we're looking at this right here.
Oh, this one here.
This is, this is the town school.
Okay.
This property, see, and this is Chisana.
Okay.
And this is where we want to get to, but this is all private.
Right, private.
Your school board members have shown interest?
Wait a minute, right here, right here.
The, at least, I think three, well, that would be myself.
That would be the one that I.
And I know Lynn's position was to come down and see where the town would be and to start the discussion here.
Well, see, because right over here, right near here is, right off Larry Young's property is.
I mean, if the school could get a, some sort of arrangement with the property owners to connect to Northwood, then I think the town would have an interest. But without that connection, really it doesn't seem to be of much use to the town.
They don't want.
No, I think the important thing is, is the connection would have to be made.
But behind.
We've run into a dead end on that.
Yep. And I don't take it the flavor, or the town has any desire for condemnation through there and.
Well, that would have to be over here.
We even, we even discussed a little cash incentive.
Yeah, we.
For these three landowners and no one's taken.
There's no way to get across here.
And so that would be, maybe you guys, is that, is that one?
What are the three, Mary?
Young.
Uh.
Cause I don't know if the map I'm looking at is actually.
Billy, what are the three landowners?
Warwick, Drinwater, Willis.
We're looking for Larry.
Yeah, and he's over here.
Warwick, Drinwater, and Willis.
That still won't help. Oh, wait a minute. Come along here.
So is that, um, and that?
This is Eddie's.
Mm-hmm.
And that was when the town was thinking about running it between, uh, Nettes and Willis, correct?
Correct.
It doesn't get us.
It's not gonna solve.
If you can, if you can get somewhere with them, by all means, try.
Yep. Well, did anybody, my question was, it looks like, well, the first one is Goodrich. And then you said Warwick had no interest?
Warwick didn't have any interest in where we proposed to put the path.
So we gotta.
It was on a particular parcel.
Do we want it to go?
We thought, here, this is Willis's. We want it to go right through here.
This is like, you can see it's 235 feet. And we'd go right across here and the road is right there. She was awful.
Yep.
You know, shit ass.
So, so. Here and this is the, so these folks actually own two of these. We could go over here. We would be right here. This is what Byron's talking about, right?
Yeah.
Oh. So I thought I'd talk to Ed again and see if he.
This is a way, cause this is where they live.
Well, I see, while you guys were looking at it, I mean, that makes sense if you were looking up at the high side, which is.
Small improvement to Chisana Drive.
Yeah.
Well, the only reason I was, what I was thinking, I was not even thinking about those people. I was thinking about coming up on the Green Mountain Power, well, it's the right-of-way and it's the road that's in there, coming across that gate and then just going across the next gate. So that no path would have to be built on Chisana, across Drinwater, Warwick, or anywhere there. I was thinking of putting a walkway right next to the gate.
Yes.
Right. Yep. Well, that looks like if.
You gotta get an easement from him. And I don't think.
And see, that's why I was looking at this map. I don't know how accurate it is. But it looks like it comes across Goodrich's property to Sanborn Drive and then it's Warwick. I don't see, I don't see anybody else in there. And someone had mentioned that to me, but the map, that bait, or that light line.
That's what you're working on, but we have been working on what the scoping study came up with, which was going up Chisana. That's why we're talking to the Chisana owners.
Yep. And so this one wouldn't actually, if we could get the path right next to the Glenn Dam to gate, that would just, and that's what I was saying, the path's already there, the road's already there. You know, essentially you go right beside the gate. You wouldn't have to go across anybody's lawn asking them to give up property. And that's why I didn't think there'd be a lot of pushback from the residents around there. You already got a road and people are already walking it. I spent my whole childhood walking up and down that road and heading up to Glenn Dam and then back to the school. And so the road's already in there for the most part. In fact, it's gotten grown up.
Who owns that road?
The, um.
That CV?
I think it's initially as it comes over, they have an easement there. Grover owns it and then it looks on the map to be a portion of it. As you're leaving Grover's property and going to the first gate on Sanborn Drive, that's Goodrich property. And I don't know those folks. And then you would actually hit Sanborn Drive and then there's the gate to go to Glenn Dam. And then it goes from there and that looks like Warwick has the property where the gate to Glenn Dam is on. So I, my understanding is Green Mountain Power has an easement there, which is the right to use it. And they don't, they wouldn't be able to sell any rights where they would have to be the underlying property owners. But that may be a little easier sell with Warwick, which is, we're not looking to go across your land.
There's no gate on Warwick. Warwick doesn't have any of that.
Yeah. Who's, who's property?
The serial that owns the property where the gate is.
Oh, the, he, his property line comes over?
The gate that you're referring to isn't, isn't used and that was right up in the sand place. That gate's not used. The gate got moved up further.
Okay.
This doesn't look like it's a place.
Actually, that gate, I think it's on town property now. And that keeps, that's GMP's gate control of who's going to the dam.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's a gate to the right that the city uses to get up to their, what they call the grav, uh, valve box graveyard.
Yep.
But none of that touches Warwick.
Okay. And I was looking on the map, there's an old, I thought it was the right-of-way going up through there, which was the pipeline. And then it always had the road right next to it. So it looks like, I thought that was the property, but. Now that, in fact, that line looks like it's marking the power line itself, which my, the road goes with the power line, right underneath it or near it, at least I think. So that gray mark is not the right-of-way apparently, then it's the power line going up through there. But I think it still has the road on it. But that's why I was thinking, we could use the existing road, which would make it a lot more palatable for people, which is to go up the existing road, you know?
So it seems like there might be some initial interest here, Matt, but we gotta do some more homework, it sounds like. Is that what I'm hearing from the board?
Yeah.
You folks might also want to pull out the scoping study that was done because some of the routes that you would be proposing to use were eliminated for various reasons and you'll want to check out why.
Yep.
Yeah. It was the Middlebury, was that group out of Middlebury that did it? Yeah.
Well, we, I, I, but that original, the school was originally brought out in the back because of the land part. And buying that land from Grover was null and void.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why it was really kind of not taken in because there wasn't an opportunity to go in that direction because of the land wasn't, that's why we had to have the kids stop going up back through there because that's how they used to get up. Two more of them who was walk behind school and then go across Grover property and then, um, no more.
But, but I don't think it was just that. I think there were some other constraints, like some security and safety constraints, too, so, yeah.
Yeah, there were some, you know, lighting and, you know, was it, you know, for kids to walk up through, there wasn't safe, that was a security part, too, you know, but, you know, that was a part, too.
Alright, you guys will do a little more homework, and Billy can help out a little bit if you need, right?
Yep.
But I think there's some general interest.
Is this, yeah, is this, this something that the town is interested in? Because we were looking at it, and you really can't use it for a field, so it'd be more for getting our players with the school up there, and, you know, one of the problems is having our players go up Post Road is an issue.
I think we'd only be interested in it if we can use it for that purpose, otherwise it doesn't benefit the town at all.
Yep.
We'll have to figure out that corner and stuff.
Yeah.
And it's-
Do they have any, uh, any other people interested in the property?
What's that?
Any other people interested in the property?
No, I think it's been out there for, I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, the realtor probably wouldn't tell me, even if they did have people, but it's been out there for about 100 days, and I think one of the problems is, I mean, and